...to do that. And the first order of business is the approval of minutes of our last meeting on June 5th. I take it we've all had time to read those? Does anybody have any comments or issues with that? Okay, then, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Brandon and a second there. Ted, all in favor?
Aye.
Good to go. Okay. County updates, next nice morning agenda, thanks for coming.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Alright, I'll make this short as always. First update is the county commissioners adopted the triennial update and that was sent to MDE for approval. The transportation master plan, we are putting a final draft together for our planning commission review in August. We have the annual report, which was submitted to MVP on behalf of the county and all of its municipalities. And if you haven't heard, our director of planning, Linda Eisenberg, is left us for Howard County. So we have an acting director right now and to be determined what will happen.
Okay.
Alright, any questions?
Good, thanks for coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Same capacity in Howard County, I assume?
Yes, yeah. A couple more south.
I would imagine so.
She's the department of planning and zoning director there, not just planning that she was.
I understand. Wow.
Good for her.
Big bad position.
Yeah. I'm sure.
Alright, good, moving on, business agenda. The presentation of the enclave at Parkside preliminary plan. I went a long way with people thinking I did, I was intelligent.
Works good.
It worked for me for a long time.
So big.
All right, gentlemen, you want us to go first?
Yeah.
Okay, bring them.
I'm old school, so I have plans, so that we can point to them and pick at them and whatnot. Good evening, thank you for giving us the opportunity to present the enclave at Parkside preliminary plan package to you. My name is Sean Davis, I'm a principal with Morris Ritchie Associates, here with Jason Van Kirk and Taylor Ferris from Elm Street Development. If any questions come up, the three of us will hopefully be able to address those. So what I'd like to do is walk you through the plan set and talk about the letters that we received on the adequate public facilities test. And then also talk to you about the pattern book, the traffic study, and the market analysis, okay? So you remember the last time we were here, we were reviewing this concept plan. And so this was the first of several steps in the approval process. And we were fortunate enough to get your approval of the concept plan, which moved us forward into the preliminary plan package. And then we submitted, I think it was mid-June, the preliminary plan package to both the town and the county. And there were actually a couple of different submittals, there was the submittal for development plan review, which went out to a variety of agencies, and then separately, there is a submittal for the stormwater management review, which just goes to the stormwater management division in the county. So we have the cover sheet, which shows the enclave at Parkside on the 23.68 acres up here, and then this shows the existing Parkside community, and then obviously the Cary Dorsey Park down here, you've got the Piney Run over here. We've got a lot of the notes that are over here, that are just transposed from the concept plan onto the cover sheet of the preliminary plan package. Then we go through the more detailed existing conditions for the site, talking about soils, topography, you know, the easements for the property, where soil borings are, a variety of different things on the existing condition side. We've got the soils chart and a whole bunch of other stuff, and again, you can see, we continuously show the relationship between, I'm sorry guys, those of you over here can't really see it. So I'm going to stretch the limits of this cord. I guess you probably turn it on too, right?
It's on.
Is it? Okay. Thank God, push it button, push it buttons. So we have the existing conditions plan. The next sheet is the proposed plan, which includes all of the grading. And one of the things that, if you had a chance to review the package, one of the major exercises for this community is really the grading, because obviously you all know, you have the property, it's a hilltop. And it's like, it's a hilltop that's next to an existing residential community that I drove through today, I'm really proud of, I think it turned out really, really nicely, that we want to integrate those two. And how best can we do that? And so the site plan, the two-dimensional site plan, was relatively straightforward. We have Town Park Drive coming through Parkside, which would come up and come into the community this way, and kind of terminate on this open space Village Green. Then we have Village Green Way, which takes from this Village Green all the way down to the Village Green in the Parkside community. So a nice, if you will, dumbbells along Village Green Way. So there's that nice continuity there and here. And then we, as part of our concept plan, we have the requirement for the multiple different land uses. And so, you know, we really want to pick the flattest land for any non-residential use, because when you put, you know, large format buildings on there, you really want that on the flatland. And so, you know, we put the non-residential institutional employment stuff here. And then we also use portions of the county wellsite to fulfill that requirement. If there's a retail component, we know, we've got that located along Route 32, where it maximizes visibility, not necessarily accessibility, but at least visibility there. So that left the residential, if you will, here on the hilltop. And so, from a two-dimensional standpoint, the plan worked really, really well. And then we spent a significant amount of time working on the three-dimensional stuff, the grading, because obviously from, from a development perspective, you really want to, one of the most important things is to balance your earthwork. You don't want to be hauling dirt off of a site, you don't want to be importing dirt onto a site, that gets very, very costly. And so you really want to balance it as best you can. And when you're doing earthwork, you've got to take into account a bunch of different things, compaction rates and all kinds of other stuff, the rock and whatnot. And so we spent a lot of time working on the grading for this, to get it in the right location. Ideally, if pigs had wings, this would probably be lower. But if it was lower, there would be a ginormous retaining wall up along Route 32, because what happens is, is the hill comes up from Route 32 and it slowly slopes down towards the Piney Run. So that's a, you know, a design factor that we had to take into account. The relationship between the proposed homes and what's happening over here on Parkside was really also very, very critical to us. We wanted to make sure that, you know, when you're looking at these homes right here, those are the fronts of the homes. And these are the fronts of the two final sticks of townhomes in Parkside along Village Green Way. And by the way, for those of you who remember, if you go out there right now, the sidewalks for Village Green Way are installed. The right-of-way has been dedicated, or will be dedicated at some point, it's there, but the road was not constructed, because at the time, we were developing Parkside, we didn't know whether or not it was going to be necessary to have that physical road connection.
So can I ask you a quick question?
You can interrupt me at all times.
Okay. I remember at the end of the concept plan, there was some talk about having only one road connection, and that would be Town Park Drive.
That's correct.
Now this new Village, Village Green Way, where exactly does that connect, which road does that connect within the existing development?
So it connects between, again, if you go out there, and if you look in the pattern book, there's a photograph looking up between two sets of townhomes, and you see two sidewalks going up and then stopping at the hill.
Right.
Inside of the sidewalks is the road. So it's graded, everything's ready to go to build a road there.
I understand.
I mean, it's actually graded up to, and constructed up to the alley.
I absolutely understand that, but my question is, which, which road is that connection going to join to in the existing development? And that road is, is what? What's it called?
I don't know that it's actually has a name.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it actually is, so it doesn't have a current name, but if it, if you were to say it, it would be the circle on Town Park Drive, right?
Village Green Loop, right?
Sorry?
Village Green Loop is the kind of...
If you look up on the...
Oh, is that what that's called?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
So right, yeah, you can see up there, the Village Green Loop is the kind of horseshoe, shall we say, that area. And that's paved, and it's a one-way street that you drive and...
Is that road there, I remember going over there to look at it and thinking, this is, this is basically what we used to call an alley, because it's actually the backs of houses? It's, it's not actually a road which was designed for that?
Alright, so, real quickly, if I can, I don't mean to interrupt, but let me... So the road is constructed from the Village Green circle back to the alley, to there.
Yeah.
Correct, it's constructed to there. But from the alley up to the slope, it is not constructed. And so, yes, there is an alley there, and when you hit the alley, you're looking at, is this the road? No, it's an alley.
So, so let me ask a question, for those houses, and I was just there, those houses that are facing the parcel we're discussing today, the fronts of those houses are facing the parcel, and they have no use of the front of the parcel from vehicle.
Correct.
And there will be though, no, yes, there will be a front access?
There is, there's sidewalks.
Uh, no vehicular front access.
Correct.
Got it, there will be no road in front of those houses, but today, they face the hillside.
They face the hillside.
Got it.
And the way it was kind of pre-designed is, if anything was ever happening, these homes right here face those homes.
Yes.
And so, so it's just similar to many of the mews, where you have homes facing each other along an open space. That's the exact same thing that's going to happen here, there's just going to be a lot of grade change.
A little more space there.
And there's sidewalks, you know, there's sidewalks in front of these homes, there's sidewalks in front of these homes. So you can gain access to them and everything, okay? So we really worked diligently to maximize the, the earthwork, to balance the site out. And, you know, we were really comfortable with the two-dimensional plan, then we looked at it in three dimension, we got really, really comfortable with a balanced, balanced site. And then we, you know, then you start putting in all of the utilities, you know, the sewer, the water, the stormwater management are the three big ones. All the sewer and water works great, all the stormwater management works great throughout the site. And so then, once we've gone through that, then we developed our overall landscape plan. And so on this particular plan, what we've done is we've shown you what is required under the Town Landscape Code and what we're providing. It's really, really important to point out that what we've done here, in terms of the total requirements, includes all of the area for all of the stormwater management facilities, and none of it's planted in the stormwater management facilities. So there's a lot more planting outside of the facilities than would otherwise be required.
I've got several questions.
Yes.
Grading, okay, from where, I don't know how to ask this question in the proper, let's talk about the square then, in the middle.
Yep.
Okay? What elevation change is there from where that exists today and where you propose it? Just how much elevation is lost?
There's four feet of grade change across, five feet of grade change across that square, it's flat, it's relatively flat.
Okay.
And then secondly, maybe preemptively, if I've known you longer, there is the park that is here, and that is also flat, that's about 200, I mean, it's, when I say flat, it's graded, I think, at a 2%, 3% grade.
So no loss or gain, roughly no loss or gain between existing and finished?
Or, oh, there's, there's definitely a change between existing and finished.
Okay.
As you can see, what happens here is, there's a lot of fill on this side and on the low side.
Okay.
Okay, in order, because we cut this out...
And you're making that flat.
And we're spilling it out over here, and we're spilling it out over here, we're making that flat for non-residential uses here, and for the park to be a large recreation usable park for football, I mean, it's 200, it's a little over 220 feet long and 150 feet wide. This area right here, which is the park.
Say those dimensions again, roughly.
220 by 150.
Got it. Relatively flat land.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it has to have positive drainage, so we've got probably a 3% or 4%, 3, 2, 2 to 4% slope across it.
Can you point on that, that map, the retail section?
Yep, right here.
Got it, alright, all that, so we got a big grade.
We do, right now, and eventually, when we find a retail user, you know, we would potentially regrade that. One of the things that I'm going to talk to you about in a second is, included in the package was a forest and delineation and forest conservation plan. Despite my best efforts, I screwed up, and I didn't directly communicate to my team, they had included some forest conservation on the retail piece. I have a revised plan that we looked at, as soon as it got submitted, I'm like, oh damn, I screwed up. And we came back in and we revised it, so there's no forest conservation on either the retail or the employment site. So those can be ultimately graded to whatever comes our way.
Okay, and... So we're losing about four feet at the, at the, at the square.
Um, yeah, there's four feet of slope across the square, so this is at 528, 530, 532, 534, so it's actually, you know, six feet across.
Essentially the same elevation today, or are we...
No, it's lower.
And that's what, about how much lower?
Oh, versus existing grade?
Yes, yeah.
Wow, okay, now I get it. So now it's come toward...
It's 530. I think it's a 540 running across between the open space.
Is that the, is that...
I think that's 540, so we're saying it's six feet, five...
Six feet.
If you blended it, it's 540.
Yeah, if that, if that's the 540, that's 38, that's 36, that's 34, that's 32.
Got it.
So it's naturally graded this way, we're pushing it that way.
Okay. Tell homes for shore.
No, they're going to be the exact same as what you see on Parkside.
What about layers, existing trees along 32?
Saved, anything that's inside the public right of way, we're not touching.
And I'm not sure where the public right of way exists as it relates to those trees today. Yeah. I'm concerned about driving north and seeing the monument to the, to the townhome on the top of that hillside, and...
Well, those are, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that, those are the snow fence easement that the SJA controls, that we are in the process of...
If not in the right of way.
No, in the right of way.
They're in the right of way. Because that right of way over here is pretty wide, between the edge of pavement and that. I bet you the trees that you see where the cursor is are all within the right of way.
Okay.
So we're not proposing clearing any of those. In addition to address your concern, when we get to the landscape plan, I'll show you what we've done towards just that issue. We wanted to make sure, your landscape ordinance requires screening for homes that back onto a road, these back onto a road, so we've really amped up the landscaping along those units right there.
Okay. Yeah, you, thank you. Can't wait to see.
That's great. So there's a couple of things that came out of our concept plan discussion, which I want to make sure that you guys are aware of. First off, you asked for a turning radii, for truck movement through, to make sure that the trucks can circumnavigate through the community. We've provided that for an SU40 right here, which is a very, very large truck, I think it's the largest truck that's, that is driven. I told them to make it the largest truck that's driven, the tractor trailer, somebody's going to have to come and, you know, deliver to this unit right here. They don't have a road in front of them, so they're going to be loading off the back. Can they get in and out with the Mayflower? Right? So that's shown here, there's no conflict. The second thing that you, you talked about was the connection to the Cary Dorsey Park. And we've, we've shown a sidewalk, a pathway that is going to come here, service the park, circum, you know, come down this slope, within handicap accessibility, right? And then come down and tie in the Cary Dorsey right here.
The back end.
Back end of it. So, and I believe that that includes paving a section of Cary Dorsey Trail that is currently not paved. Okay?
No wetlands issues back in there?
I'm sorry?
There's no wetlands issues or anything back in there? No.
No. So, okay, so that is the proposed grading, and then we get to the landscape, and as we mentioned, heavy plantings. These are the homes that back out on Route 32. So we've got a mixture of evergreens, which are the circles with the little spike things there, flowering trees, and, you know, sprinkled along this entire way.
How tall will the, do you have a sense of like the type of tree or how tall?
I mean, I would imagine the evergreens are going to be a mixture of pines, probably maybe a couple of fast-growing pines, like a white pine, mixed in there with some hardier pines, slower growing, so you get a little bit of diversity in species and diversity in growth.
Yeah.
And whatnot. And the flowering trees, it could be, you know, a variety of different things. And one of the things we could obviously take a look at would be, you know, we, we've kind of maybe overplanted this section, maybe we take some of those and we'll put those back there as well. We didn't, we wanted to preserve, this is the retail portion right here, and then this is the non, the employment side.
You want the sidelines there.
Yeah, so, right.
And my, my concern wasn't so much that section of 32, but as you're coming up 32, it's the ones that are facing you right now.
Oh, those are the fronts of those homes.
Yes. Even, even, again, coming up 32, I just imagine, just, just looking up on the hillside from a low point, and all you see is big halleys.
Alright, so you got to go back in, let's talk about this grade. Because this is what we call, what we call Mountain Kiefer, because the guy who did the grading study, his name's James Kiefer.
Okay.
This is the high point right here at 564, 564. And this right down here is at, that's 564, that's 550, that's 540.
Beautiful.
These are over 20 feet below.
And you saying the trees are still going, the only easement will stay there?
Yep, you can see, if you look at the preliminary plan, you can see the actual tree line here, it's all within the public right of way. Then basically, we've actually are constructing a retaining wall right here, okay? And there's 15 feet of grade change down from the retaining wall, these guys right here. There's sidewalks in front, we then planted these so that, you know, you've got this nice view shed coming down Town Park Drive here, back into here, and then the sidewalk comes up here, these guys will be fronting. So if you were to see anything from Route 32, you would be seeing the fronts of our homes.
That's...
We good?
Yeah.
Alright. I had you at 564, is that what you're telling me?
I just, I had envisioned sitting up on top of the hill, and it's just like, oh my gosh. So could you put the existing patch of trees, just put your finger where it exists, on that plan right now? No, no, I'm sorry, the one in the middle, center top.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're somewhere like right in...
Right, yeah, one little patch, I'm just trying to get an idea.
You've seen those trees?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're not...
Oh, no, I'm not asking to say...
They're starting to be taken down.
So, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, they're just to the right of...
Point of reference, that's all I'm looking for for that, not, I'm not saying keep those.
Those are the right of way.
They're, they're...
There they are.
Cereche, wooden things is going to take those guys down like two ways. So, yeah, I'm surprised they're even, I mean, you know, from a farming community, I mean, this land is tilled, I'm shocked that they're still there. So, there's no other, there's no environmental reason, it's got to be because there's some rock outcropping, that's the only thing I can think of.
You shouldn't fall down.
Now, we've done a bunch of borings to understand the rock, and, you know, obviously we have all the experience, you know, Jason and Taylor were the developer of Parkside, so they understand what's going on subterranean on that. Then the last plan in the plan set for your, which was included in your package, was just the overall of the stormwater management plans, to show you, we have a variety of different facilities in accordance with state law, which is vigorously reviewed by the county. They want to make sure that they're complying with state law. We have to do what we call ESD to the MEP, which is environmental site design features, things as bio swells, bio retention facilities, smaller facilities that are sprinkled throughout the community, similar to what you see in Parkside today, as opposed to the previous larger, you know, stormwater basins, okay? So we've got a number of them, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, they're kind of sprinkled throughout, they have to, there's a drainage area calculation we have to go through and all that kind of stuff. So this is just to provide you the overall, I have on this sheet or in this package, I'll be back in a second. This is the actual 17-sheet stormwater management submission to the county. So it goes into great detail about each one of those facilities. So for example, this shows drainage areas and where, you know, water's going, the arrows to make sure that we've got, you know, the right drainage areas and that kind of stuff. This is the detail of, you know, these microbios and whatnot, and where the water's going. And then there's, there's details about every one of the stormwater management facilities, every single one of them is detailed. So we have that, we didn't submit that to you because, you know, it's 17 pages, and I look at it and I'm like, okay, I generally know what's going on, so, but we gave you the overall, okay?
One of the issues that happened during construction of Parkside is that there was some runoff that ran over the pathways.
Yep.
Are you all looking at that? I mean, I don't know if you can do anything about it or not, but I would imagine that some folks would be complaining if there was runoff coming into the Parkside area during construction.
I sure as hell would be. If I lived in one of these townhomes, I spent half of my dollars on it, of course. So, I mean, we were required under a variety of different permits, the grading permit that we have to get, the National Pollution District Innovation System permit, we have to put in super silt fences, we've got to do a bunch of stuff. That doesn't mean that they're all constructed perfectly, that we don't get a storm that's not going to, you know, have, you know, crazy effect on it. The only thing that I can say to you is that if anything ever comes like that again, you just call these guys, because they have to come back out, they have to, you know, fix it, maintain it, make sure that it's constructed right. I mean, when all those things are constructed, the county comes out and inspects them all. And to make sure that they're constructed right. So there's a bunch of safeguards, but we never, you know, you just can never tell it, there's a storm that comes in, I just, we just don't know. So if anything, and I think we said this when we found out about that, you just got to call these guys, because they're, that's their responsibility, okay? So the last thing on the plan set was, let me just review it real quickly, is these are the forest conservation plans, there's a forest and delineation, and then there's a forest conservation plan, which outlines what we need to afforest. We don't have to reforest, because there's not a lot of forest on site, we have to afforest, we have to add trees that were never there, or that haven't been there in however many hundreds of years. And this plan had shown some of those, I think I screwed up. No, I went too far, sorry. This was the plan that was originally submitted, and there was a big forest conservation easement right here. And we're like, no, that's in, you know, the retail portion, we can't do that. So we have relocated that on this plan to over here. So in addition to the grades, in addition to the existing forest along Route 32 that's going to be retained, this is an area that is going to be afforested. So even more trees. Alright, so that's the plan set. Now, we also included the pattern book, which is a relatively short pattern book compared to what we did at Warfield, because A, we learned a lot while we did Warfield, and B, this meant a lot of Warfield. So when we talked about the residential architecture, it's really simple, it's like, it's going to look like Parkside. These are just going to be, you know, they're currently planned as 24-foot units as opposed to 20 and 22, but they're going to look exactly like they look, and we've already gone through that, you know, we've, we've invented that, we're not reinventing it again. However many submissions we had before Planning Commission, Historic District Commission, I think personally that the units turned out beautifully, I really, really liked, I mean, it's definitely, I think, it was, it was something a little bit non-traditional for the builder. You know, they're used to doing the stuff that you see at Raincliff, and so we were really pushing the envelope with them architecturally. I think even Lennar comes out and says, yeah, those really look good. So there's no reason to reinvent the wheel on the residential side. On the non-residential side, we've included basically the same design criteria that were required in Warfield, so we're good to go there. On a signage standpoint, there, you know, there's going to be, you know, maybe a pier along Town Park Drive coming into the enclave that would say the enclave at Parkside, it was going to match the Parkside entrance feature. So there's, we have a lot to build on, so we didn't think we needed to reinvent the wheel. We welcome your comments on this, okay?
What differences are there between?
It's not a lot. I mean, it's the same plant materials that were listed, there's the same, you know, signage criteria.
Same signage, same mailbox, same...
Same light fixture.
Same light fixture, same, same facades or, or materials, shall we say?
Yep, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. I mean, I think we're all really comfortable with how Parkside turned out, hopefully you are.
Issue with that, I should know what, if there are any differences, we're not seeing Issue with that, I should know what, if there are any differences, we, we're not seeing or reading between the lines or.
Nope, there's nothing, I mean, it, it's pretty simple and pretty straightforward. I'm sorry?
They're large.
Just large.
I, I have a couple of questions that arose when I read through the pattern book, not so much about the design concepts, but the step pretty well established, I think. It talks about the thirty-two connection and how in many conversations with unnamed people, um, it had been led to believe that that couldn't happen and that you had evidence of that in, in written form. Um, I think it would be good if we could get some of that at some point in the, in this, this process, okay? So that we, it's, it's, it's clear that this just isn't a developer saying, well, we can't do it, the, the state highway administration's got a role in that. The other thing I, I'd like you to, to think about, I, I don't know if this still exists as a concept or not, but I think it does. For years and years, there was an idea of there being something called an Obrecht connector.
Yes.
Bringing Obrecht Road down, you probably know more about it than I do, Sean.
I did.
And as far as I'm aware, it's still part of Carroll County's plans.
I don't know whether it's part of Carroll County's or, or Sykesville's master.
I think it's, but it's not in Sykesville.
It's not, yeah, so, you know, where Obrecht Road makes the turn at the, at the ball field.
Yeah, they, they bring it through the Fairhaven property and make the connection there. If, if that still is an ongoing part of, of a Carroll County transportation plan, um, it, there, there may be some possibility of combining the, the, the two concepts, that we need a connection for that property and, and the Obrecht connection, that somehow one of those things might come together.
Yeah, um, a couple of thoughts, the next time you're out there, you need to, uh, so where the Obrecht connection would come across Route thirty-two and touch um, the enclave is on the south side of a major wetland drainage floodplain and whatnot, okay? Yeah, so if you could zoom out a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, well, I don't know, what program are you in?
Just Google Maps.
Yeah, there you go, perfect, I mean, you see all those trees?
Mm-hmm.
They're trees because it's in a floodplain and a wetland and so on and so forth, so in order to cross over and hit Park, uh, the, uh, enclave, it's gonna have to cross over all of that. Couple of the fact that there is those, there's that cul-de-sac of independent living units at Fairhaven and then there is a dramatic drop-off from them. I don't see how it's physically possible for that connection to happen on this side of the road. Um, if it's ever gonna happen, it would happen probably on the north side. And then when you get into the north side, when you're coming across on the north side of the floodplain, you have the crown of Route thirty-two coming from Eldersburg about where the Fairhaven, or where the E M A, I don't know what they're called anymore. Uh, when I worked with them, it was E M A, about where their office is and then it heads down that slope. I don't think you have a nice site, site distance on that roadway to get another access point.
So the actual concept itself isn't actually gonna be physically possible?
I hate to say this, I, I remember drawing that line on the plan for Fairhaven um, when we were doing a master plan for their campus. And um, it looked really good on paper, again, it's one of those things between two dimension and three dimension. And you just look at it now and you say, I don't know how that physically can work, so.
Wouldn't that be on the county's transportation plan coming forth here shortly?
Yeah, so I can speak to that a little bit, the idea of Obrecht is um, would not be a county funded road, it would be a um, a developer driven road. Um, and we have not, it was part of the, included in the two thousand eighteen Freedom, Freedom Plan. Um, we have not had any significant um, conversation with S H I. Um, Joe and I and Linda had, you know, have talked about this previously, but um, you know, we have, we haven't pushed for it, I know S H I did their thirty-two study. Um, and it's a little unclear what that exactly means for Obrecht, um, so.
Okay.
So, th- there's another possibility, again, if you can zoom out real quickly. I'm not trying to throw, you know.
Not, not at all.
Blood on fire, but if there's an Obrecht connection, it would probably be up along the existing E M, again, I'm saying E M A, only because I don't know the current company's name, um, up along where their office is. To tie into that road, it already has an intersection.
Further north.
Uh, along Route thirty-two.
Yep.
Um, which could provide another relief valve for the, for the town.
For, for retailers, yellow flag.
Yeah, it's, it's, again, we, we, we looked, um, in fact, Elm Street hired the traffic group to do an evaluation of where that could come out. And where it comes out on Route thirty-two, the only pl- plausible way, cause I got site distance issues going north on Route thirty-two, coming around that curve with the topography. I got site distance issues coming southbound along Route thirty-two because of the hill, then it bottoms out at the, at the uh, uh, Piney Run uh, crossing, is like one space. S H I said there's no way that they would ever allow an access, even a limited access, like a right in, right out. Um, because it conflicts with a lot of, and this will be provided, will be provided.
That's, that's all I wanted, just so that we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's for our, our purposes, that, that we, we've got that. The other thing that, that struck me in, in that as well was that there's a, there's a quote, something like, as there are only forty-seven homes, no play structures or equipment will be constructed in either recreation space.
That's correct.
And um, that strikes me as, well, okay, where are they gonna, where are the kids gonna play? They're gonna walk through the existing development and use the play equipment which was designed for that development? It strikes me that I would have a bit of a problem with that, I think.
So there's, there's two large recreation areas and we just don't think that there's enough homes to support an additional play structure, okay? But there's two very large play areas, so the kids will have plenty of areas to play in. And if they choose to walk down Village Greenway or the open space, which was our, so I can down to Village Greenway, they can play on the playset down there, just as the children in Parkside will be able to play on the playfields, which they currently don't have, up here. And so, I mean, it's gonna be kind of a, a combination of both. What we didn't have the room for down in Parkside was a large recreation facility, I mean, a large recreation area. You know, I mean, the, the area that you see over here is almost the size of, of a football field. I mean, two twenty is just basically eighty feet short of a, of a football field, and it's the same width at a hundred and fifty, so.
Uh, it, part of that field is, or most of that field is on the non-residential use, correct?
That's entirely dedicated as park.
Entirely dedicated.
That's all this green area.
Got it, and then going back to grading, does it, does it tie into the grading with the non-residential area and non-retail area? So it is a larger play area?
Until it's.
Until that's all gone.
We're getting there. We're getting there.
Yes. This is all graded out, this is all graded out to the alley, right here, this is all graded out, this is flat.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, like dead flat.
Yeah.
Alright, then it slopes down into relatively gently two to four percent slope, which just basically provides us positive drainage.
Got it.
You get lower than that, you start getting bird baths, right, so, yeah, it grates, it grates all the way up here.
Now, what about parking near the trail, I had anything, oh, only, other than on-road?
On-street parking.
On-street, and help me out again, with the street, how, two parking, two drives?
It's two drive aisles and one parking.
One par- parking one side, two drive aisles, okay. How many feet from uh, existing, their existing development up to the corner?
To this?
Yes, approximately.
See, I knew you were gonna ask me that, which is why I want a scale, because it's a sixty scale, which is unusual scale.
Rough idea, I'm looking at cars parking.
It's uh, two hundred and fifty feet, two hundred and eighty feet.
Okay.
It's twenty cars, I mean, ten cars.
Yeah, ten spots.
Ten, like, you know, Yukon Denali X.
Yeah, exactly.
And you've got, you've got goals, that's more around the corner, just. Right, right. Uh, so, in the pattern book, I believe is where I had read that, uh, it was talking about condos or.
Property owners association.
Management associations or, or some, in fact, I don't know the exact terminology you use, so what you propose over here is two of those, correct?
There's one master associa-.
One master association with two sub-associations, yes, no?
Yeah, it would be, yeah, it'd be one master association to have common areas that would pertain to all of the property owners, the residential and non-residential, and then one sub for the residential and one sub for the non-residential.
Now, is that master gonna be run by the residents or is that going to be something run by?
I would let Mr. Van Kirk or Mr. Ferris.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is really a mini version of what's going on at Warfield, where you have a P O A that the, the, I believe the Warfield Collaborative still basically runs that P O A and then you have the sub-H O A that, that pays some money into the P O A for open space and, and common area maintenance and that sort of thing, but runs itself separately. So in, in this case, we just have a smaller version of it where we still have um, non-residential and retail parcels that we have to um, be ready to have a, a property owner's association for those parcels that's separate from what the homeowners association is, and then you have that master association that's, that's the umbrella over both of those, the property owners association and the homeowners association.
Okay.
Cause, for example, the, the open space that's proposed within here is not strictly limited to the use of the residences. I mean, if I'm working, you know, if ultimately there's a, there's a building there and I'm working there, I can go out and, I can use that. So a portion of that open space is gonna be maintained by the non-residential property owners association. See, I mean, they're gonna have to.
And we would run both those organizations until they're able to be handed over to owners. So in the H O A's um, standpoint, the rule in Maryland is at seventy-five percent occupancy. Um, you have uh, an election and you hire, and you get a board of directors and you hand over the H O A management to them.
Okay.
Uh, we still stay on as the deckler and developer and, and have some rights to finish the plans as they were approved and to get things off bond and all those sorts of things. And on the P O A side, you would do the same thing once you have those businesses and owners, you know, in those buildings and, and had uh, owners of which to then take over the P O A.
Okay. So, you guys, in essence, stay in perpetuity then?
Yes.
Until the commercial gets sold?
Yes.
Got it, heck, and let's go back to the previous development, or has that been turned over yet?
No, we're in uh, um, what I would call the red line um, process, where we're going out and surveying everything, matching it up with our black line development plans, seeing where all the discrepancies are, going out and fixing those discrepancies. And once we get a good red line plan that we're comfortable matches what we are, we're supposed to build, then we submit that to the county and to you guys. And everybody goes out and does their inspections of their different agency uh, oversights. And we get punch lists and we go through a very public process and, and ultimately a hearing process when we get to uh, road dedication. Um, we're still uh, having quite service paved the very last section, so that none of that's gonna happen until we convert some of the facilities that are on that north side that some of the stormwater facilities are more traps now and we'll be bio retentions and then surface the roadways. And, I mean, that's gonna be coming soon, but we haven't done that quite yet. And, but I expect that by, I think we told, we, when we met with the H O A, we were telling them September timeframe is probably when we're surfacing those roads. And then we'll go through that bond release process on that. And, and that will be the same in this case, just, you know, different timeframe uh, based on where we are now.
Got it. Maintenance very similar to what's going on in your current, current, as far as who is responsible, roadways built the same way?
Yeah, they have to be built to public standards.
Understand, and I know there was a large discussion with the concrete strip delineating the roadway from the parking area and I'm just wondering if that's coming up here.
No, there's no impervious.
We, we have um, we have done a stormwater management plan without the impervious asphalt. Um, we have a little bit more space, a little bit more green space than we had at Parkside, and so we, we've eliminated that, I think, you know. Um, I just think it's a better practice that we don't have to go that direction, and that was why those concrete strips were there, was to separate the regular asphalt paving from the porous asphalt paving. So no, no concrete strips, other than the curb strips are, are what is being proposed.
And then messaging um, for the folks that come in and buy properties here, there could be other commercial or retail space that gets brought in, that's gonna be part of. The, the issue is that, you know, no one knew that you were gonna go and buy the property uh, later. And so some of the folks have messaged to people like me that uh, we didn't know that there was gonna be another development um, coming next door, so you know, being transparent in reference to the process of what could happen, of course, we don't know who those establishments would be, I think it's an important part of messaging.
And, and we have a section in our homeowner disclosure that is put together partly by us, partly by Lennar and, and the whole homeowner's disclosure package comes together. And there was state, there was a, a section in there that talked about future development of mainly referring to the Warfield, cause we were part of the H O A, part of the P O A, and there was gonna, there's gonna be more development at Warfield in some fashion at some point in time. Um, and so it was a lot to discuss about that. Um, it didn't necessarily specifically talk about the integrated parcel, but it certainly had the potential for um, you know, future development around the, around the townhomes. And so we have a similar disclosure that would talk about the fact that there are existing retail and, and, and non-residential uses that are permitted for this property that, you know, are, are to be uh, determined in the future. I understand that concern, I mean, I, I came from the residential world, if we can request that the builder make that more forthright, you know, as hard as maybe an independent addendum that said, you know, hey, there, you know, there is a commercial and a retail component where it's a one-page or it's not fair to.
So coming from, I'm, I was the president of the H O A at Raincliff for six years, so coming from, yeah. So, coming from something like that, so the biggest thing I would say is like coming from the residential side is making it known when somebody walks into that uh, into that sales, into that sales office, that it's on the map. Because if it's not on the map, nobody's gonna read, nobody's gonna read these addendums and things like that, like, you think people read?
Totally agree.
Just to assume nobody reads.
How many people here who bought a house read all those papers that you sent them?
Right.
And, and sometimes the sales reps don't fully understand all the information, you know, until Lennar where.
Just wanna get it closed, right.
I, I played that already, but it is something that we can.
Yeah, well, that's why I said if it's, if it's on a, if it's on a map of the site plan, they can't, they can't change that.
Bill wants to show the rosyish color thing, but I agree as, you know, retail, commer-, you know, on outskirts of this nice landscape plan, I, I don't disagree on them.
And then from visibility for retail coming down, since there's not likely to be an access point to thirty-two, um, I'm thinking about the future and we do have a retail place there, who knows if one'll ever happen, but just pretend there is one. Essentially be some sort of possible marquee signage or something that people can see when they're coming in, kind of like you can see on any of the other roadways, right, that's sort of the idea?
Along Route thirty-two.
Right, right.
But not anywhere within Parkside or, or the enclave.
Got it.
I mean, somebody's gonna, if retail goes there, which we'll talk about in the market study in a second, it's destination retail.
Okay.
I mean, you, you know it's there, you're going there because you know it's there.
Right.
And it's not drive-by going, oh, we gotta stop and get, pick up a, you know, quart of milk.
Yeah.
Because you're not gonna find it.
Okay.
Yep, anything else on that, passing the book, no?
Okay, so um, two last things real quickly, or actually, three last things. Um, there was a traffic study that was incorporated in the, the submission package. I'm sure you all read that and studied all of the diagrams, um, which after thirty-seven years still confuse the hell out of me. Um, but basically, I think the conclusion is, the existing roads work fine for the proposed development. The roundabout works fine, the intersection of Route thirty-two and Springfield Avenue work fine and they will work fine if there were even a lot more homes that were proposed here. A couple of things you might be asking yourself is why wasn't there any of the non-residential included in the, in the traffic study? And the reason for that is very simple, because A, we didn't know what the non-residential would be and the traffic engineer was asking us for P building, we're like, well, it could be something that's very, very low use, like a, you know, uh, self-storage or something like that, to medical office, completely different uses, so recognizing that um, traffic impact studies have a shelf life and that whatever we do on the non-residential stuff, we have to come back before you for the concept plan modification, the P E C modification, and then we would update the traffic study at that time for that particular use.
I have a question about traffic study, I should have a couple. Um, it's, the, the, the point of entrance and exit was the um, Town, Town.
Town Park Drive.
Town Park Drive, there is an entrance and an exit to Parkside. A little bit further up the, the thirty-two at the top of Herman Drive, but that wasn't included in this traffic study, I, I just wondered why that was.
Yeah, I don't know what you're talking about.
And is that opening right there?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's an entrance and an exit up there, but that was not included. I know, of course, you said, I don't know how many.
I don't think that was intentionally admitted, but we can probably get you quick feedback from the analysis they did, with the video, you know, video hanging, so I, I don't know the answer to that, but I don't think that was intentionally admitted, I guess, to answer the question.
Yeah, okay.
But I'll, I'll make it up.
You remember that the reason why we provided that access point was to have two means of ingress and egress to the Parkside community. I think, you know, there's, this flow into that, it makes sense to. I think, you know, this this flow into that, it makes sense to just ask the traffic engineer, what if any impact does that have on that? I mean, the reality, um, Mr. Chair is that, I mean, it it really depends upon the discussion regarding Village Greenway. Which we should probably talk about.
Yeah.
Because if Village Greenway is not constructed, then everybody's gonna be coming downtown Park Drive, right out to Springfield Avenue, there's really no reason. If Village Park, if Village Greenway is constructed and I can see certain people coming down that, hitting that alley and going.
Yeah, I I don't know if you're gonna go and talk about the the numbers.
I I wasn't going to unless you had specific numbers.
About numbers because um, there are certain methodologies of calculation in here which are somewhat arcane to a layperson like myself.
We do have a traffic engineer.
Yeah. I'm just looking at the 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 trip generation, I think it's on page fifteen. And it talks about of the forty seven units which have been constructed with double garages, I assume, so I I assume we think that there's gonna be two vehicles for each house at least. And yet, at peak hour from those forty seven units. It says that there will be only thirteen vehicles leaving at peak time and only fourteen vehicles returning at peak time. And it just seems to me that those numbers to a layperson seem kind of counterintuitive to me.
Which which page are you on?
I think it's page fifteen, I'm not sure. It's table two.
Table two, check.
I wrote it in my notes.
Thirty one percent go in and. Uh, sixty nine percent go out. So total and peak hour, in and out, there's nineteen total trips, six in and thirteen out. And the only thing that I can say to you on that, which we will definitely follow up is. These are, it's through the transportation engineer numbers that are categorized by the I T E. That, you know, the the traffic engineer doesn't set. I mean, so we'll we'll double check with him, but.
It just just seems to me to be an inordinately low number of journeys.
Those haven't changed in the past three years, have they?
They're updated yearly.
They're updated yearly, okay, thank you.
Which is why traffic impacts.
More stable.
Shelf life.
And and part of that is the the peak out, the narrowness of the peak hour. You know, and you might have people that are leaving for work, but they're leaving, they're leaving in the six o'clock hour, they're not part of that peak hour. AM trips and if they're leaving later, that's.
Thirty two. That's peak hour or thirty two.
It's actually.
Lots of government people who are very early morning risers up here.
Or I I I actually wonder if any, and this is gonna be interesting to find out the answer, whether or not the, you know, the work from home from COVID has had some impact if they're updating, if I T E is updating these numbers.
That's where I was going, which is that they, the past three years, there's a lot less, well, a lot less office space being utilized, I'll tell you that much.
The only thing that was actually beneficial about COVID was actually driving.
No, our our traffic engineer, he's he's great, I'll get you guys feedback on on all these.
Actually, we're not there yet, sorry, I'll hold traffic at public facilities.
Was that your only question?
Yeah, so we'll answer to it.
Alright, so we'll follow up with you on that. And then finally, uh, the last thing that we have is the market study prepared by our PRG, our Property Research Group. I mean, obviously, I think, you know, it's pretty self evident, you've heard this a number of times in the past. That the residential market is obviously very, very strong. Um, and the non residential market is questionable. But the one thing that I thought was very good, um, in this particular study was the fact that, I mean, there was, basically, our PRG was saying. If you're building speculative stuff, you're, don't do that. But there could be a build to suit that comes along on the resi, on the retail or on the non re, uh, or on the employment side that may make sense. And you've got the land for it and that'd be great. But you 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 would focus strictly on that is the is the build to suit. Not the spec, I mean, nobody's gonna go out there and build a strip retail center without, you know, having a bunch of tenants because it's gonna fail. And the rents um, were shockingly low to me. I didn't realize how low that they were in the marketplace in Eldersburg, so, and the um, vacancy rates were. Um, you know, eight percent vacancy on the employment flex office space was um, dramatic. And what he's, you know, what they were saying is, is that people are leaving one space to go to another space because they're paying, they're paying the same square footage. On rent and this is new. But all that does is create a vacancy over here that you gotta deal with eventually, so. Um, I think it's pretty self evident, but I'd be delighted to answer any questions.
Anybody else about that?
So the final thing is the A P F O, um, we received five letters um, from the um, from the town and the county. Um, and I think, you know, four of the letters are pretty self explanatory, they, everything passes in terms of police, fire. I mean, the fire, the fire chief had very specific comments regarding turning radio and making sure things are posted. For no parking, which is, makes perfect sense, if they're gonna pull a fire truck, they need to put the stabilizing arms up, got all that and that will definitely be taken care of. Um, we will obviously show that in subsequent submissions. So the last one was the schools and the question is, is like, okay, what the hell is this, I'm sorry, what does the school letter actually say? Um, so when I go back in and I look at it, what it said to me was, okay. The law for Carroll County says, and please correct me, uh, from the county, and if I'm wrong. Is that there's an adequate public facilities ordinance that says this is how we evaluate schools. And there's specific um, percentages that are acceptable under the A P F O. Then there is the school boards standard of what they consider to be acceptable or not. The only one that's law is the A P F O. And so when we look at it, we look at the law, which is um, which basically says it's in, it's approaching inadequacy. When it's between ten, a hundred and ten and a hundred and nineteen percent occupancy. Um, anything a hundred and twenty over is inadequate and therefore, you know, obviously, you you would have a problem. Well, when I look at Piney Ridge Elementary through the five year period, the maximum it gets is a hundred and fourteen percent. So there's never a point in time where it is inadequate, okay, it's always adequate. But it's at the higher reaches of adequacy in terms of a hundred and fourteen percent, we get that. Um, the Sykesville Middle School is really the issue. Because the high school is like at eighty percent capacity um, throughout, at max eighty one percent capacity um, in a five year period. But the Sykesville Middle School does approach, um, it it breaches the hundred, it goes above one eighteen to, I think, one twenty three, if memory serves. Um, in twenty twenty seven, okay, which is um, obviously four years from now. And so, um, but at the same time, the report also says that there is a capital project to put an addition on the Sykesville Middle School. So it's gonna be interesting to see what would the addition add in terms of capacity to the school. Um, and so it's our interpretation, welcome to discuss it with you, that the schools are adequate. Um, but we recognize that uh, Sykesville Middle um, is an issue that we're gonna need to obviously main, you know, watch as this progresses. As we talked about in the pattern book, construction for this, in all likelihood, will not begin until the spring of twenty twenty five. I mean, we would love for it to begin in the spring of twenty twenty four and, you know, if everything works out, that'd be great. Um, but in all probability, it's gonna be the spring of twenty twenty five. Um, in which case, you know, pupils won't be going in until twenty twenty six or twenty twenty seven. And every year, schools go through and they rate the capacity of their schools. You know, families move out, other families move in, this one had two kids, this one has four kids, or that one who left had four, and so there's capacity. I think the ratings are done in September of every year at the beginning of the school year, how many kids do you have in your class? Well, here's that many kids, so I can totally, total them all up, uh, and stuff like that, so I I think, you know, it's our interpretation that schools are adequate. But we have to watch the the um, Sykesville Middle School. Um, in in twenty twenty six and see what the addition, what capacity the addition offers and whatnot.
Well, I just want to clarify here. We have to watch, there's nothing done once this gets approved though, as far as watching the adequate capacity from schools, correct? You don't do any adjustments, if we vote for it today to go to council for adequate. Facilities, there's nothing more you guys have to do, correct?
That's correct.
There's nothing really to watch for this development, but for the community, the area, yes, correct?
Yeah, and the other weird thing about Maryland, yes, the answer.
I just wanted to make sure, okay.
That is correct.
Okay.
The other thing that's unusual is, is this, the the town county relationship when it comes to schools is that you can approve a development even though it may impact county schools. And this is often done, not in Sykesville and Carroll County, but in other jurisdictions. Where a local jurisdiction will approve a plan, it may make a school inadequate and you're like, we don't care, that's the county's problem. Y'all don't do that, which is great, um, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's, yes, the answer to your question is. You can approve this tonight, which we would absolutely, or you can recommend approval to the council tonight, which we would obviously endorse a hundred percent. A thousand percent, uh, but uh, they um, but recognize, once we do that, then.
I I just wanted to get that clarification now, and that's going to the first part of what you said about the schools and having the the two sets of metrics being used.
Confusing.
Is very confusing and and.
But it is only one of them actually lethal.
That's right.
I I understand, which may, I, it's interesting how it was phrased in the letter, I will say.
I think it all.
Little different phrasing that was used here, so my suggestion, whoever powers may be, is a conversation be had with the folks at the county, so we don't have these. Uh, communication issues going forward with further adequate public facilities across all county jurisdictions might be a wise thing to do.
So just so you know, we received these letters last week, um, and thank you very much for sending them, obviously, to us and and whatnot, so we're gonna have a chance to review them. Prior to our hearing tonight, um, but the the reality is we, because of the holidays and everything, we haven't had a chance to really. Reach out to some experts that we know in Carroll County who are on the school board that could opine on, you know, what this means. Um, and we would definitely be interested and willing to do that between now and the council hearing in August. Should the commission uh, vote to move this forward. So I mean, it's one of the things we would like to clarify because I can tell you right now, here's a great example. Anne Arundel County did a very similar thing, their A P, but they actually did it with their law. They lowered the percentage of um, capacity um, based on their own uniqueness, which was well under the state's rating capacity for schools. And then you look at it and you say, well, if I'm, if I'm the state and I'm gonna ask, and you ask me for money for a new school, I'm gonna say. Well, your existing schools aren't up to our capacity yet, why don't you fill those schools first and then come back to us and ask for money?
Joe, but there's, there's a point, I don't know if you finished presenting now, where where we need to involve staff.
Right, so I was just gonna say, if if the presentation of the plan is pretty much done and we can move on to the adequate facilities piece. Um, you know, we can move to the next agenda item and Kevin give a staff report and then we can kind of all talk about.
Okay, so Kevin, if you wanna do that, we're moving on now to what is uh, item two of the business agenda, which is the adequate public facilities recommendation.
Better idea of the plan overall, so, yeah, and at this point, planning commission is only being asked to make a recommendation to town council. Uh, regarding the adequacy of the public facilities, which basically means, and you know, I'm gonna go through this, try to get through it all quickly, but the planning commission shall review the certifications received from several agencies. Prepare the findings and recommendations on the adequate public, on the adequacy of public facilities. Um, and transmit these findings and recommendations to the developer, clerk and town council. Once received, town town council will hold a public hearing, review the commission's findings and render a final decision on the public facilities. So what we did is staff has reached out to um, several departments, got letters back. Uh, regarding the adequacy of public facilities and I'll just go through those briefly, I know we touched on some of them already. Um, but town sexual police department mentioned they were able to serve the proposed subdivision with no issues. Town sexual public works also able to serve the area to include trash and recycling pickup as well as general roadway maintenance and snowplow services on public roads. Uh, Carroll County Bureau of Utility says that capacity is available to serve the subdivision with water and sewer. But official allocations will be reserved once the associated public works agreement for the project is recorded. Um, schools, the big ones, so as we're saying, it's it's confusing, so uh, they sent the two separate standards. That the school, that exists basically, um, the concurrency management ordinance, one is the one that uh, is law and that. The county development team looks at when they're doing their review and is the one that we focus on when it relates with staff in in order to maintain consistency because that is, that one is the law. Um, so based on that ordinance, um, as you mentioned, Sykesville Middle School being the the area of concern for twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight. Uh, but again, Board of Education's already indicated that they'll be including in addition to the sexual middle school building. In their educational facilities master plan, it's twenty twenty three to twenty thirty two master plan. Um, so there is some concern there, but that that issue is known to the Board of Education, um, and they're already. Talking about and trying to take steps to to alleviate that issue. Um, so again, our focus was on the the concurrency management ordinance numbers, not necessarily the Carroll County Board of Education numbers, which were a little more strict. Um, and then Sexual Freedom District Fire Department also mentioned that they were able to serve the subdivision, given that access roads and alleyways maintain a twenty foot clear path. For the passage of a fire truck and sufficient room for a twenty two foot turn radius. So those are the five letters we did receive, now our code does mention several other agencies, um, that that we could potentially reach out to. Uh, those, you know, we listed those additional agencies in the staff report and the reasons for not reaching out to them. But if Plan Commission wants staff to reach out to those agencies, we certainly can. Um, and real quickly, those those several other agencies of the county health department, Carroll County Transportation Department, Town and Sexual Parks and Recreation Department. And the State Highway Administration, so those are the ones that we did not reach out to and again, the reasoning is in the staff report. Uh, but based on all the information we've received and the analysis that staff has done, um, we don't have a concern with the adequacy of the public facilities. Serving the area and we've included in the staff report, uh, language for a potential motion if Plan Commission agrees with that assessment and decides to recommend it to for approval.
So I guess, uh, you know, um, during a potential future town council meeting, I I know someone who might be at that meeting. And one of the questions that maybe they might ask, and maybe I'll just ask now, is like, what's the alternative? So we hear from lots of parents that that schools are not adequate regardless of this development, just in this particular area. And there's heavy concern in reference to. Um, there's heavy concern in reference to changing what those school districts look like, which is currently under consideration and then it was tabled and then it's coming back and it really has. Less to do with this particular development and I'm happy to hold the question for the actual meeting, but that's something that. I I kinda wanna know the answer to, so like, what happens?
For, for like sexual middle?
I mean, like, the, I mean, you're basically saying the town's supportive of moving forward with adequate facilities and. I understand the justification about why. But I mean, how how are we going to explain that to to the parents, uh, or the community members?
I can, that's the whole reason why they came up with the adequate public facility standard that they did. Because if without that, there is no objective criteria by which to judge whether a school is over capacity. Right, I mean, it it, you know, I have, I have one parent who says, oh, the school is way crowded. And another parent says, well, it's nowhere near as crowded as the school it used to be in.
Yeah.
So you have to put it in an objective standard and the percentages that they've listed are objective, they're evaluated every single year. They're based on not just Carroll County, not just, not just Sykesville Middle nor Carroll County, but the entire state. The State Department of, you know, Board of Education helps establish what is a state rated capacity for a school. It's taking into account a variety of different things, such as children moving in and out during the school year. Right, um, a bunch of things that I don't, I'm not even clear about, but they came up with an objective standard. That's the only thing that we can go by, otherwise we're like, well, it's at capacity today, but but you know what, it's it's fine tomorrow because the Jones moved. What else will we able, what else will we be able to to judge it by? So that's not going to appease a parent whose child is in middle school, who they don't believe is getting inadequate education because they believe it's overcrowded.
Or or with a parent that has a kid in a class with forty students in it or thirty eight students or maybe even thirty five students. Which is what we hear about uh, quite often anecdotally, it's not like I'm in the schools checking at all, but that is what we're, that's what we hear. And and then we're gonna be okay moving forward with with this, even though these issues are outstanding.
The one thing I would say, I I would ask that parent is, have they met with the principal of the school and really, you know, taken, evaluated the school? Are there rooms that are not being, you know, fully utilized because, and therefore this particular classroom has got thirty five or forty five students in it? But there's a classroom right down the hall that's empty, it's just being, I mean.
See, that's, that's a staffing issue, not a facilities issue.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, and and we don't have anything, so, but the thing about, the thing, I mean, I was in education for fourteen years, so I. Not that I know about budgets, it's a one year budget. Okay, they they ask the county executive in Howard County every year for a budget and some of it might include construction and. You don't know, just because it's in your master plan. you don't know, just because it's in your master plan for ten years, whether the funds are gonna be available to build that extension. And you won't know until the year you've actually got it in there, as, as planned to start that year. So, we, we can say now, well, they're planning to do it, whether it's gonna get done for twenty seven, twenty eight, we don't know that.
Sure, and, yeah, staff doesn't have the crystal ball, but I guess, based on our, our evaluation, what we have to go off, are the numbers we were provided, and, you know, uh, the master plan saying that they plan to build this, um, build this addition. So, you know, given that information, and given that we have five years until Sexual Middle School is considered inadequate based on their projections, we felt comfortable in, in, for staff that we can recommend this.
The one, the one thing I could add real quick, and I didn't interrupt you.
Sure, man.
Now, the one I can add to you, to, is, if it's in the capital budget, then it's incumbent on any parent whose child is currently or will be in that school, to make sure that they're staying abreast of what's happening at the Board of Education every single year. I mean, I have, you know, I, I'm fortunate in that I chair the city planning commission, and we deal with our capital budget. And it's a six-year budget, okay? And I have people who have come for the Chick Webb Recreation Center, which was, when I started six years ago, at the last year of the capital improvement, they're there every year making sure it's moved up a year. Every single year, they're there making sure, and then this year, it was funded. Okay, and there was no way that I was not gonna fund that, because, you know, those people would have been irate, because it had been moved up and moved up and moved up. So, it's a parent's responsibility to stay abreast of what's going on with the Board of Education as part of the capital budget, to make sure that that's on the, it's on track to get built.
Steve. Point of clarification, I believe, is you had mentioned that there's, it is ordinance, we have that here, that was state, state numbers. However, I believe it's county, I believe it's, it's the Carroll County Adequate Public Facilities and Concurrent Management Ordinance which handles this.
It is, it is true, that, I'm sorry, it, we're, the, the percentages, it's the percentages that I believe they're relying on the state percentages of what the state rated capacity is for a school.
Got, okay.
Not, it's not a state law, it's a county law, it's a county APFO. But they rely, I mean, the state, when, when the state grants money to local municipalities for school improvements, they establish a capacity rating for that school.
Got it, okay, yeah.
I guess my follow-up to the question is, what happens if, like, what's the alternative to, um, you know, uh, I realize that we're right at the, sort of right at the crest of what the law says. And so, you know, but I'm interested in understanding, okay, let's say that other council members are thinking of the other standard, what happens in that sort of situation? Do we go back to the developer and ask them to modify their plan in order to fall within the capacity limitations? Or how does that process work?
You're talking about, like, what the council process is, not the planning commission process?
Yeah.
Because again, I mean, the planning commission is to make your recommendation to council, now council can, you know, God bless them, they could, they can take whatever position they want, when it comes to how they deliberate, what they wanna consider at that point, and then make those requests of the developer. Now, whether or not that would stand up, or the developer would agree to something like that, is, is, well, not likely to happen. Is there a standard that we have that gives council the ability to say, hey, we're just, we're just gonna go off on our own and say, well, no, to this adequate facilities ordinance, because we think there might be something in the future that's not adequate.
Yeah.
You could pretty much say then, everything.
Right.
Yes, there are.
I, I do, I do recognize that.
And, and you know, playing devil's advocate, one thing's been very eye-opening to me is, you know, call forty-seven townhouses, I mean, you're probably five, six, se- seven middle school, or is it any given three-year window as opposed to the empty Esther selling to family who?
I, I think that's a critical question to, to ask, and what do you, you know, the, uh, the demographics of what, you know, who purchased in, you know, the prior project, you get, you can sort of get an idea.
Forty-seven unit, I can dig in, or I'm, I'm speaking from the cup, but you know.
And it'd be nice to have numbers, wouldn't it?
Any grade, you know, you're talking sing- single digits you're bringing to a school over a, you know, a, a three, four, five-year span as opposed to, you have folks that are moving out, and younger families are moving in, and they have a one and three-year-old, and they're eventually, but you're not adding any more homes, you know, you're not, you're getting tax implications on transfer taxes, but you're not getting revenue from new, so, I'm just playing devil's advocate, but I, I think the major contributing factor is more from resales than it is from new construction, especially forty-seven townhouse units, and that's, that's an assumption. None of us know until, you know, the road hits the road, but.
So, the one thing I would say, and although I appreciate where you're going in that, I, I would, I would, um, strongly suggest to you, the reason that, that the county has gone through this for decades, and the pupil generation that they have on a per-unit basis is not a willy-nilly calculation, it's something that they've gone through ad nauseam. And so, the reason why there's only five middle schoolers is because they know, in a community of te- of single-family detached townhomes, and that number changes when you go to multifamily condos versus rental. That changes dramatically when you go to single-family detached homes. They've already factored all of that into it, so I would, I would suggest not to argue those numbers, let's, because it's similar to the discussion of, you know, well, the school is full, well, the only thing we have is the law. That's what we, that's the only thing we can rely on. The one thing I will say, however, which may address in some part your argument, is that everybody always thinks that development's all gonna happen all at once. Once this is approved, there're gonna be forty-seven townhomes on that property tomorrow. And despite every wish of Jason and Taylor for that to actually happen, it just doesn't happen. And it's gonna take probably a couple of years for this to build out. And so, we're gonna know as we go along, the county's gonna know when they go along. It's not gonna be like September shows up, and then all of a sudden, you have all these kids that are coming from the enclave at Parkside to show up at Sykesville Middle School, and they, and they're like, families are moving in during the year, kids are going to school. They're gonna understand what the heck's going on, so they go back to the, the school board and say, hey, listen, it's even more important now that that addition happened.
The, the permit process for these will become part of what this body verifies and reports to the county every year in a letter that he is going to sign. Probably have signed one already, will sign one every year. Talk about our, our, our construction starts in this town, which the county then uses. How many townhomes, does that mean how many students in school? That we would hope would filter down to the Board of Education and the county lawmakers who are approving those funds for them. So, if there is a metric behind the scenes, which, which we see, because we, we approve every year, that does make it to the county and gets used in the various ways they need to use, transportation, schooling, uh, you know, any other adequate public facilities needed for this region.
So, I think it's really, what you said there is important, Steve, and thank you as well, Sean, for the explanation. I think we need to flesh out the staff work on the actual documents that get sent to the council. It's the main reason why I'm asking the question, so that when we inform the council of whatever the decision is, that it's a fully vetted, uh, discussion where we get to say some of the things that you're saying, that, you know, we're, we're on the cusp of, um, capacity, but there are s- uh, sort of fail safes, yeah, safeguards within the process, so that all of that can be articulated, because not all of us know it, because it's not what we do every day.
Well, is it our concern? Absolutely, it's both parents and citizens in this body, we should be concerned, and the council should be concerned. Uh, is it our problem to a degree? Yes, because our kids are part of that problem, or our grandkids, or could be experiencing that problem. But the solution i- is truly flawless, but the responsibility is with the county.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's really where it is, the various agencies of the county.
I, I found it, uh, really almost entertaining with the, uh, the letter from, you know, the Board of Education, which is.
You have a different.
I just, I know how red they got. I mean, uh, I just, you, he went through the numbers, the numbers are what they are, very objective, and then two reasons why, but it might be okay. You know, one was the ramifications of the blueprint, you know, for schools for Maryland, which is, that is, we can shake things up tremendously. And the other one, that there is a project on the books for Sykesville Middle. I just, I found that hilarious, like, oh, well, thank you, I mean, yeah, and it's exactly, it's the, it's like guard rail, he's showing us his guardrails, is what he's doing. So, and I'm trying to think, well, where, where's his head?
I will, I will also offer, as you mentioned, we will do a little bit more dating ourselves prior to the council hearing. So, if you're counseling, and other council members will, we can provide you a little bit more than what's in just that.
Well, and just to clarify, process, as, as part of these deliberations are happening, we do have our legal advisor here who's taking notes and making sure that everything that we talk about, as far as, you know, specific recommendations that you wanna make to council can be reduced in writing, and, uh, that will actually come back to this body in the, at the August meeting. So, you'll have an opportunity to review exactly the message that you might not send to the council.
I put my foot in.
So, basically.
Don't elaborate exactly word for word what Ken just said.
If we're done with schools, I have something else on adequate public facilities, if that, but I don't wanna jump into the middle of the school.
I'm good.
I can move on. And I think I know the answer to this, but I have to ask the question anyway. So, let's go to water for a second, and, uh, let's talk the non-residential uses. So, I know you didn't submit those as far as water capacity, and various types of uses for, for non-residential, depending on how much water, but how are we looking, and maybe that's a question for Claire as well. So, how are we looking here for potential future water use, non-residential on this site?
I don't know that number.
I, I wouldn't figure, I'm just, but it's something that struck me, because we, we were at the last meeting, we discussed this, and, and, and yeah, we'd like to get commercial, but I think we all know the, the likelihood of something soon, uh, I'll leave it at that. Uh, but water is a concern, so.
All right, so, the one thing I don't know, um, and, and you could, I don't know what, when, when you sent the request to the, the Department of Bureau of Utilities, did it include anything other than the forty-seven towns?
No, it was just, uh, the residential portion.
So, I mean, because the concept plan doesn't, they write, you know, specific numbers for footage that would be implemented, and if you remember, when you were going through this process for the Warfield project, we had to put a limitation on medical office, not general office, but on medical office, whose work consumption for medical offices significantly higher than is your general office. A lot of times we can wash them on, and stuff, so.
And, and if I'm not mistaken, there may have been some capacity taken from other area, or, or at least reallocated, maybe that's a better way to say it. Uh, so, I've just, I'm concerned that, that we don't box ourselves in here today, or next month, or whenever we do that. So, I, and I, I'm looking to the future.
Yeah, and that's a very interesting question, I, I gotta, I mean, we, we definitely talked with the Bureau of Utilities about that between now and, um, the August meeting. I understand what potential capacity issues that may be for non-residential. You were provided with forty-seven, but the overall plan includes a square footage of this, and here's what we're thinking about. Because you remember that, if we're getting, uh, the county was saying, oh, no, this is gonna be a big medical facility, so I'm going, no, it's not. And so, their numbers were really, really high in medical office use, and we're like, there's no way, there's, there's always looking possible here. You know, so, uh, we reached an agreement with them and said, okay, what happens if it's this percentage of, let's hold on, residential, that could be medical office, so.
Yeah, again, just look, look out for the future, it'd be good, good to know where we are, uh, or potentially where we could be with that.
And I, I'd expect to appreciate the, the county's position to be conservative, um, and so long as it doesn't squash it an opportunity because of that conservative approach.
I think one, one quick distinction to make, particularly on the Warfield project, was I think when that plan came through, you had preliminary plan the entire site, whereas this is, you're really only preliminary planning the forty-seven units. So, it's like, obviously, all of that water and sewer capacity issue would come up when they would come in and amend their preliminary.
Well, yeah, no, that's when I don't want it to be an issue.
That's why they were searching.
And I know you don't.
I mean, it, it, it doesn't matter whichever decision you make, there's gonna be kind of, um, you know, some ancillary things that are associated with it. The reason why we didn't propose anything specific on the non-residential stuff was because I remember we spent a lot of time on the non-residential aspects of the Warfield site plan, which were useless, because they're really, you know, the office that we laid out with the parking and everything else like that, we have no idea whether or not that's gonna happen. And I mean, and that, remember all the heartaches that we went through in that site planning stuff and everything, and the grading and all that kind of, like, oh my god, so we didn't wanna do that again, but now, you know, the, um, the unintended consequence of that is, we've got to address this issue, which we can reach out to the Bureau of Utilities.
Anything else on this particular item? So, it seems to me that what we, what we've gotta decide, since the recommendations for public facilities are all pretty positive, apart from the school's issue, is the school's issue enough to hold us back from voting to recommend that the council certify adequate public facilities? So, if anybody has anything that they wanna add to that, feel about that?
Well, I, I'd like to add a point, and I think actually reiterate a point that Joe has made, it is, our, our decision today is, is a recommendation, it's not an approval, it's a recommendation to town council. They are going to be able to get the entire record of what we discussed here, for schools, you name it. And I'm not sitting here saying we should vote for this positively today, but I guarantee you, these guys are gonna say that, and I guarantee you, these guys are gonna do whatever they can do to, to help clarify that, that, that school letter prior to it going to council. So, council's gonna see everything we've discussed today, or hear it, see it in the notes, he is gonna be able to communicate that to council, uh, uh.
Whether he wants to or not.
They're gonna be able to go on that. And, and they'll be able to have follow-up if, 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 if we're looking towards a, a potentially positive vote for adequate, or recommendation today, for adequate public facilities.
So, let's just, um, think about it, if, if we were to pass this motion in favor, um, the next step would be that the attorney would have to draft a letter containing a recommendation to the council, which would have certain specific language in it. Um, and I'm, I'm making an assumption, let, let's just assume that it passes tonight. It might be useful if we could, after we adjourn this meeting, after that meeting, if we could remain for a little while to, to assist her with the language of their recommendation, should we, should we get to that point?
May I just suggest to you that that type of conversation should occur in this meeting?
During the meeting, yes, very much so.
Okay, good. So, let's, let's move on, is, is anybody?
Well, again, I'll say this, once that letter is drafted, uh, we will certainly circulate that prior to the next meeting, so you'll have an opportunity to review it, and if anything's, if you feel like anything's missing, or needs to be expanded on, we can certainly do that prior to the adoption of it, uh, at our August meeting.
And so, against, play out the timeline of it, you would essentially draft the letter after the meeting, it would come before this body again, the first mon- uh, first Monday of August.
August seventh.
Which would give enough time to make any revisions by the next, uh, council meeting, on August fourteenth, right?
That's right, okay.
Well, theoretically, if we get it to you in advance of the meeting, you can review it individually, you could send your comments to me individually, not reply all, but send them to me individually, and then I can be prepared that night, and I'll have my computer, and we can make any further changes, um, that we need to that meeting. And I have been taking notes and listening to everything that you've been saying, and that will formulate, you're required to have written findings and a recommendation, so what you've been saying will be incorporated as your, your findings and recommendation, once you make the motion to go, whichever way you choose.
We also have to bear in mind, the next meeting is the public hearing, I understand?
Yes, public hearing on the plan.
On the plan, yeah, okay, so that, that will be done at that meeting, Steve?
Army. Got it.
So, the next, the next planning commission meeting is scheduled to be the public hearing on this preliminary.
Got it.
And these guys are gonna be, I'm, I'm gonna be in Scotland.
Okay, good for you.
Go with you.
Scalavero?
So, we have, we have, we may well have read it, we, we have a motion here, a suggestive motion.
Okay, we got it.
Steve?
So, I, I wanna make sure we're all quiet for a few.
Okay, so, I, I am gonna read this suggestive motion, I'm gonna move that the planning commission recommends that council find, based upon the information provided, that public facilities serving the property to be adequate, while considering any conditions outlined in the public facility letters. Furthermore, the planning commission asked our legal advisor to draft a formal recommendation letter to be presented for ratification at the commission meeting on August seventh, so that it can be transmitted to the clerk of the town council. Do I have someone to second that motion?
Okay. Actually, you, you second.
Okay.
That's how you.
Very good.
All out tonight, I'm gonna.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, I think?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Good, and so we'll, we'll be happy to help you with the language. If you just wanna write it, and maybe at the next meeting, we can provide editorial.
So if it's okay with.
Please send it to us.
I will draft something, I'll send it out to everybody. If you individually revise it, send me your comments, I'll collate them. I'll create another document, a version two, and then I'll send it out to everybody, and that can be something that you can um consider at the meeting.
Sounds like a plan.
Good, sounds good.
Good. So moving on, having dealt with that, um, we've got town updates?
I, I, actually, I've got one comment I wanna make to developers on, something I think I would like to see, and you kinda hit on it. Uh, and it, it looks like it could be a while for commercial. My personal opinion is the community could benefit from perhaps some built type of environment for a playground or something. Given all the land, I'm sure, you know, beautiful playing field, I'm sure some type of, of active recreation would be helpful up there. Perhaps a little place curb cut with about five spaces to park or so. Might be a nice amenity, especially since it's on the trailhead. It is the beginning or the end as you're looking, and you've got that wonderful, almost football field-sized field to do with. I, I think a little type of active play a- and parking may be a help to that. Uh, given we could be a number of years before we see anything else potentially on the, on the non-residential use. Just a suggestion.
Yep, anything else dealing with, with the development or any aspect of it, moving on? Good, town updates, thank you.
Do you have anything?
We've talked, there's nothing, nothing new since last.
Nothing new since last time, well, that's good. Well, in which case, I move that we adjourn. Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Done, good, good stuff.
Good job, guys.
Thanks, guys.